Okay.
Yeah.
As a matter of cross-training, Adina Hoover will be running tonight's meeting.
So a call to order, our January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two school board meeting. Roll call please.
Ms. Conover?
Here.
Mr. Marin?
Here.
Ms. Redonia?
Here.
Ms. Coyle?
Here.
Mr. Avia?
Here.
Ms. Steckety?
Here.
Ms. Hoover?
Here. Now if we can stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, you could go into closed session. We can get a motion.
So moved.
Second. One second. Adina, you need to read the motion.
Okay.
Because it gives the reasons why.
The chair will annotate a motion to enter into closed session to discuss personnel issues, student discipline, and matters relating to an individual student.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call. Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Steckety?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
No, I'm doing online.
We're going to move along to the approval of minutes. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the December 14, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the closed session of the December 14, 2021 regular meeting of the Board of Education as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to move along to public comment and I'm going to read our guidelines. Public comment is a time for the community to address the board with comments and questions. Each community member addressing the board has five minutes. Once you have been notified of your time, it's up, kindly step away from the podium. Public comment will be for 30 minutes with no more than each subject lasting 20 minutes. Please understand this is not an engagement time. The board will consider your comments in its decisions. For those comments and questions requiring a follow-up response, the board president or superintendent will follow up. So we have one public comment so far, Bill Regala.
Hi, Bill Regala here. Thank you for the time. I sent you guys a letter. I sent the board a letter today. Just wanted to read this comment to make it public. This is really around the policy decision. It's nothing personal. I know you guys do this to make the community better and this is really a disagreement around policy. So I just want to be upfront with that. With that in mind, I am disheartened by the CUSD 201 board decision to unanimously vote for the permanent continuation of the grade level center configuration. However, its method of passage and the lack of public transparency is what is most concerning. The board, the school board should be a check and balance on the school administration, not a rubber stamp. It is now clear that on the, based on the result of the unanimous vote and the method by which it was railroaded through during a global pandemic, that the members of the school board do not have the interest of the entire community in mind. The reason I state this is that the proposal presented by the administration after their 50-minute presentation in the November meeting was all around a single K through five building. At the end of that presentation, they had their recommendation and proposal. I believe it was Mr. Javiya stated if they could change the proposal to be more specific around grade level centers. Mr. Carey then made that change for the December session. It was then voted on without really discussion and it was passed unanimously. The community is unaware of this permanent change. The administration by its own account failed to meet the goals it set for itself in reaching the community for gathering feedback about the GLC issue. Right now, less than 1% know that this change has even been made permanent. As the board, you were not only okay with the administration failing to meet its own goals it set for itself, I think they stated they wanted to get about 10% community involvement, which is still very low, they didn't even hit that. So you were not only okay with it, but complicit by not holding them accountable. You voted unanimously and passed the proposal anyway. The feedback that was publicly available from the community, the community was predominantly against the GLC configuration. If there was feedback that has not been publicly made available from other community members, then the board should make it public. Public comments from community members asked for additional information and those requests have not yet been responded to. Public comments in support of GLCs basically said, "I'm in support of the admin," not necessarily "I'm in support of GLCs." There was not enough community feedback gathered, but the community feedback that was gathered was mostly ignored. I would ask that you make an agenda item in a future board discussion to discuss this and discuss did you have a relevant and extensive amount of participation from the community. The oath taken by all board members includes the following text. I pulled this right off the CUSD 201 website. "I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community, formulate goals, define outcomes, and set the course of name of school district." The board represents 100% of the community, not solely the administration. By not even making a best effort to get extensive community involvement at a volume necessary to make an informed decision, the board's rubber stamp of the administration proposal should disqualify the board members from holding their seats as it is in direct conflict with their oath that they have taken. If you as a board member are going to continue to be a rubber stamp for the administration, I suggest you can resign immediately. If you do, will not resign, I can only ask, do you at least move towards including the entire community in major policy decisions? Or at the very least, hold people accountable to the goals that they set for themselves? This board has not been transparent with the community and because of that, all the trust has been eroded. It is now the duty of the board, based on their own rules and bylaws, to inform the community and now that you have voted, you are now accountable for the outcome and success of the grade level centers. So please actively promote this decision so that the community can learn why the decision was made and how it will be an improvement for the district. We would love to see specific measures of success and the current data available for these measures of success. I also ask that you review the board policies around community relations and determine how this board will correct the communication failure displayed around the GLC topic. I've included a link in the email, which again links back to the CUSD 201 website. When will the board be updating the news media via a press release at a minimum so that the larger community can understand that this permanent change to GLCs and understand its metrics for success? You voted six to zero. You're all for it. Let's promote it. Let's get people talking about it. Right now, people don't even know. The board is now responsible, and this board is now responsible for this decision. There needs to be sunlight, transparency around the results so that the community that was not extensively involved in the decision-making process can hold this board accountable for the outcomes in future board elections. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Before the board moves on to the consent agenda, I want to take a moment. One of the items, personnel action that you're going to be approving, Kim Anderson, our business manager will be retiring as of June 30th. And so the district went through an extensive process, screened several candidates. We had a committee made up of various stakeholders within the district to interview candidates and I'm very excited to have a recommendation that's part of the consent agenda for our new business manager who will be able to actually start in the district May 16th. And so I'd like to introduce to the board Anthony Ruelle and give him a couple of minutes to share a little bit of information about himself. Anthony?
Hello? My name is Anthony Ruelle. I'm extremely thankful and excited to be the next CSBO for this, for this amazing district. A little bit of my background, I was the CFO for Skokie School District 73 and 1/2. Prior, I was the business manager for Glen Allen School District 41 and then the business services coordinator for a small district in Morning Grove. Going through the interview process and learning about the district, I'm extremely eager to get started and work with this amazing team of administrators and I look forward to meeting the staff, the Board of Education, and other stakeholders of this community. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Welcome. It's nice to meet you.
Are there any other, is there any other public comment? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. One, personnel recommendations. Anthony Ruelle, CSBO. Nicole Jones, TA South School. Tajma Jackson, senior, head varsity football coach, Westmont High School. Two, approval of additional December 2021 expenditure report. Three, renewal for SSCIP cyber liability insurance. Four, approval of fiduciary liability insurance coverage.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
Ms. Deckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Mr. Avia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Maron?
Yes.
Moving on to information and discussion, we'll go to the presentation, presentation of the fiscal year 2021 audit.
All right. Tonight, we have Susan Jones from Miller Cooper.
All right, tonight we have Susan Jones from Miller Cooper and she's going to go through the audit, some highlights for you.
Good evening, everybody.
And you all have the annual comprehensive financial report that was prepared, so if you want to follow along if she's, if she's going through it.
So I'm going to go through two deliverables related to the audit for the past fiscal year 2021. As Kim mentioned, the annual comprehensive financial report. When I go through the presentation, there were three new GASB pronouncements adopted for fiscal year 21. One of them was to change the name of your financial statement from a comprehensive annual financial report to an annual comprehensive financial report. But past the table of contents and the introductory section where the transmittal letter is, there's the certificate of excellence in financial reporting for fiscal year 2020. Kim will be filing the fiscal year 21 as well to get the award, but just congratulations to the finance department and the Board and the administration for getting the comprehensive certificate of excellence in financial reporting. Past the certificate is our audit opinion. Inconsistent with prior years, it's an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance the district can receive. Just because the GASB has been really busy the last couple of years, once again, there's an extra paragraph in your opinion because the district had to adopt GASB 84, which basically took the student activity funds and that used to be a separate statement and now that cash and the corresponding liability is included in the general fund. And as a result, there was a restatement at the beginning of the year, which is not an error, that's just the way we had to adopt the GASB pronouncement. So past our audit opinion is management's discussion and analysis and this is, really highlights the year-over-year activity and all the significant financial transactions of the district. It is prepared by Kim and it's unaudited information. And then past the blue tab on page, hard copy page 19, is the statement of net position. So this starts the basic financial statements and all the current and long-term assets and liabilities of the district is included in this financial statement. Overall, net position at the end of the year was $11.8 million, which was an increase of $1.7 million from the prior year. There is about $27.2 million of long-term liabilities, which is a decrease from the prior year and about $17.7 million of that 27 million relates to pension and other post-employment benefit liabilities. Turning to page 20 is the statement of activities and again, this is on a full accrual basis, but total revenues for the year were $40.1 million, offset by total expenditures of $38.5 million, so an overall increase in net position of about $1.7 million. Expenses, expenditures were down $3.7 million from the previous year and that had a lot to do with just lower expenses because for majority of the year in '21, there was remote learning. Turning to the next pages, page 21 and 22, these are, list out the, each of the individual major funds of the district with all the current assets and liabilities. Each of the major funds of the district are in a positive fund balance position with combined total fund balance of $19.5 million. And then turning to page 24 and 25, this again shows each of the major funds of the district and all the revenues and the expenditures for each of the funds for, during fiscal year 21. You can see on a combined basis, the increase in fund balance for fiscal year 21 was $979,000 with the majority of that increase coming from the transportation and O&amp;M funds, where again, expenses were lower than the previous years because a lot, you know, transportation costs were way down, et cetera. Past the basic financial statements on page 28 begins the notes to the financial statements and the notes go on from pages 28 through 77. If there's any particular line item, like you want more information on capital assets or long-term debt of the district, there's a financial note that provides more explanation. Just a couple of things I want to highlight, again, there were three new accounting pronouncements adopted during fiscal year 21. The one that had a quantitative impact was GASB 84 related to student activities. It's called fiduciary activities. But also GASB 88 was just added some more disclosure in the notes to the financial statements related to debt. And then GASB 98 was adopted, which was the change in the name of the annual comprehensive financial report. And then on the last page of the footnotes, on page 77, there's note M, which does discuss the restatement as a result of the adoption of GASB 84 and that increased beginning of the year net position by about $244,000. Past the notes to the financial statements is required supplemental information and it has more of the disclosures related to all the pension actuarial liabilities as well as the other post-employment benefits and information related to those liabilities. One thing I want to point out is on page 78 of the RSI information, you can see that the IMRF is in an asset position, so not a liability position. The last two years, IMRF really had some strong investment income, which helped reduce that liability and change it from a liability in the prior year to an asset. So there's an asset related to IMRF recorded in the statement of net position of about $1.3 million. Past the required supplemental information is some additional information related to each of the major funds, actual activity compared to the budget. So if you wanted a little bit more information on individual revenue or expenditure line items, you could go to these back pages and see variances from revenue, from budget and actual activity. Does anybody have any questions on the financial statements? Okay, and just, I wanted to go through the highlights of our required communication to the Board of Education. It's this letter. Our audit was executed in accordance with government auditing standards as well as generally accepted auditing standards. We do look at all the district's internal control processes and based in our review and update of our internal control procedures, we didn't identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. Our firm is independent of the district. All significant accounting policies and disclosures have been included in the financial statements and we find all those to be reasonable. Turning to page three of that letter, it does disclose all the new accounting pronouncements that were adopted, but also on pages three and four lists a slew of several other new GASB statements that are going to have to be adopted by the district over the next, next year and the next couple of years and hopefully we'll be working with Anthony to get those adopted correctly in the financial statements. On page five, we had no difficulties during the audit and we really want to thank Kim for all her help during the audit for the last several years. She was very transparent with information. She gave us very good documentation and really took the time to take the audit seriously and give us the information we need. So thank you very much. We had no disagreements with management. And then the last item on page six is something that we discussed last year as well, but as we go out to all our clients, not even governmental clients, but all industries, it's just, as the district is very diligent about their procedures and controls, just to be continually diligent about cybersecurity and the risk, we go out to these clients and the, and the dangers and the infiltrations are becoming more creative and aggressive. So just a reminder to keep that up and to keep training your employees and things like that on security issues. That concludes my formal presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you, Kim, for all the hard work that goes into this as well.
Thank you. We're going to move along to the update for the 2021, '22 school year.
And so as I have been with all of our school board meetings, providing our community with an update on how our school year is going throughout the year with the pandemic. And as always, you know, I know we view a lot of information, but just in case this is the first time a member of the community is, is watching our Board meeting. But again, our guiding principles, obviously, number one is the health and safety of our students and staff. But then this year, we're also committed to full-time in-person learning and again, we've been able to hit that goal as well. We want to make sure that our instruction is meaningful and engaging, that we're addressing the social emotional needs of our students, that we're providing consistency and stability for students and staff and by maintaining in-person learning, we're accomplishing that and then providing continuous professional learning opportunities for our staff. DuPage County is, you know, and there's the next chart, we'll show you this, but you know, things have changed a lot since the beginning of the school year. We're at a high level of transmission with new cases per 100,000 topping 4,000 and the positivity rate being over 20%. And if we take a look at where we were, again, just as recently as October, the end of October, we were under 4% positivity rate and for our local community, you can kind of see where we're at now, double-digit positivity for our community as well as DuPage County. And then in terms of the new cases per 100,000, again, we were in some cases, under 100 new cases per 100,000 and now we're, you know, over 1,000 in most of the surrounding areas. And so definitely the, the new variant is making an impact. If we take a look at our own local data since our last Board meeting, we have had certified staff, nine certified staff members who were positive. Many of those occurred over the break and so in some cases, individuals were able to start when the students did and a couple of cases, they needed to quarantine for a few more days, but most of them are back now. Same thing with our nine certified staff, we had six since December 10th, but again, most of those can be attributed to during the holiday break. Our student attendance since December 10th, you can see the number of COVID symptoms. Again, those numbers have been increasing and then testing positive. We started, our attendance has been, our absenteeism has been right around 15% since we started back on January 5th, I believe, was the first day of student attendance. And again, a lot of that was over the holiday break and so during the winter break, kids were testing positive, so they couldn't start when the other students did. We are, towards the end of this, the first week, we only had a couple of positive cases and we're starting to see a few more now at the beginning of this week. So we're starting to see a few more positive cases. The nice thing is, we're not seeing a lot of close contacts, which is because of how well our schools have implemented the mitigation guidelines and so we're able to minimize the close contacts. And again, when students are fully vaccinated, then they don't need to be excluded if they are close contact. In terms of the transmission level, again, DuPage County is a high level of transmission and there's two criteria that are looked at, the number of new cases per 100,000, which are obviously well over 100 and then also the positivity rate right now is above 10%. And so both of those criteria put us in the high level of transmission. In terms of guidance, masks are still required due to the Governor's executive order, physical distancing is three feet, masks are required for public transportation and the contact tracing is for less than three feet. And just a reminder, we, we still have some parents who would like to see our students attend without wearing masks, but again, there are consequences if you defy the executive order and so we want to make sure that we remain in compliance. Plus, if truly our goal is to remain in person, then we want to make sure we're doing everything we can and following those mitigations. In terms of the exclusion, I know the CDC updated their exclusion principle or criteria and now that has reached the IDPH, but we're, school districts are still waiting for the ISBE to give their guidance and so I know some school districts are already communicating to their parents that they're looking at a five-day exclusion, but other districts like 201, we're still waiting for the final guidance from the ISBE and what that looks like and what that means for school districts. As soon as we get that, then we will follow that as well and so we may be able to reduce that to five days for students who are fully vaccinated. But until we receive that from the ISBE, we'll stay with the current decision-making tree, which means that students are excluded either 10 or 14 days. The, I think it's on the next slide, yeah. The DuPage County Health Department, they are now authorizing the test to stay, so schools can implement that. We're trying to work with North Shore Labs, that's who does our COVID testing and they had offered when we first entered into our agreement with them, that they would be able to supply us with tests that then our nurses could utilize for that test to stay. We haven't gotten those tests yet, so we're reaching out to them and seeing if they can provide us with those. Without having, be able to do the testing on site, then it's up to the parent to find somewhere that their child can be tested on days 1, 3, 5, and 7 in order to meet the test to stay. So we're hoping North Shore can help us with that because then our nurses would test the students when required, North Shore would pick up the sample and then would communicate to us the, whether it's positive or negative. The COVID testing that we are doing through North Shore is involuntary basis. We were able to move up, we're typically Mondays, but with us returning on January 5th, we, North Shore was able to test whoever wanted to be tested on January 5th. We had 135 individuals take advantage of that and all those tests came back negative. So that was a, a nice result and so, and then this week, we returned to Monday and so we're getting those test results this week as well. But again, that opportunity is available to any student, any staff member. Every week in my update, I provide the link. The link is also on our website, so if a family wants to enroll their child, it's free testing and their child can be tested every Monday at the start of the week. And again, there is no cost for that. And then vaccination clinic, we did host a vaccination clinic on January 8th. It was very well attended and there was a little bit of a hiccup because the, we provide the facility, but it's the IDPH who runs the clinic and they subcontract to another organization. Like a lot of groups, they unfortunately had people call off that morning so that because of either symptoms, they couldn't report and so they're a little bit understaffed and so in the morning, definitely there was a lag time to be tested, but by the afternoon, it was a much shorter wait period and some families returned, they may have left in the morning, but returned in the afternoon and were able to get vaccinated. We had around 240, 241 vaccinations that were given that day and so that was excellent to see. We're seeing a lot of boosters for 12 to 16-year-olds because right before the clinic, they authorized that visor booster and so we saw a lot of students coming through. So overall, I think it was a successful clinic. We're also looking to partner with Westmont Pharmacy and if we are able to confirm that, we're looking at January 29th. Again, it would be at the junior high, it would be nine to one at the junior high. The pharmacy, it's a little bit different process for them, so first, they have to get word from the Health Department that they're going to be able to secure a number of the vaccines in order to, to run the clinic and so as soon as- And so, as soon as Westmont Pharmacy notifies us that yes, we're in good shape, then similar process, there'll be a link that we sent out to school families to register for an appointment. And again, we'll try to get as many people vaccinated as we can, because with this new variant, you know, definitely, if we get more people vaccinated, we'll be able to stay in session. And the last thing I'll mention before I take questions, the staff has been amazing since we returned, and, you know, it's very difficult to get subs, and so, we're relying on our staff to step up, in some cases, sub-internally, maybe take on a little bit different responsibility than they normally do. And the staff has been amazing and has been doing that for us. And, you know, we've been able then to continue having school in session, which is really critical, I think, at this point. And so, as long as we can maintain our staffing, we'll be able to maintain in-person learning. Are there any questions?
Can you go back? There was the slide with COVID to date. You had a note on the bottom.
Yes.
Can you speak to the high school? Because you've got the four in the asterisk. And I just want to make sure that we, that we call out and understand what happened.
Sure. So, again, our process, if somebody tests positive, then we have to determine if there are close contacts to that person. We've had 32 close contacts, but of those 32, 25 students were fully vaccinated. And so, those 25 students were able to remain in school, they didn't have to be excluded. And then also, if somebody has tested positive for 90 days, they would also not be excluded. So, out of that 25, very, or out of the 32, very few had to be excluded.
Only four.
Right.
Out of 32 close contacts, because everybody else was vaccinated or had the three-day
Right.
Or had the 90-day immunity, which is great. Thank you for clarifying that. I also just wanted to call out the testing with North Shore is a mouth swab, if I'm correct, or a nasal swab?
Correct. It's a mouth swab. You have the option. If some people really want the nasal swab, they can have it, but it can also be a mouth swab as well.
Okay, cool. That was, I think I caught it somewhere over break, and I was under the impression it was a nasal swab, which is real hard to sell.
Right.
To
For kids.
To kids.
Right.
The mouth swabs a little bit easier to sell. So, and then I just wanted to say awesome on the vaccine clinic. I heard there were, I heard there was a wait, and there were lines, and I was happy to hear that there were enough people to have a wait in lines. Not that anybody wants to have a wait, but I was very happy to hear that we're, there were that many people getting boosted and vaccinated. So, thanks for putting that on, and thanks for setting it up.
Yeah, it was a great turnout.
I just have one question, but before that one comment, kind of related to your closing comment there, and that's just, again, just thanking the staff and the community for coming together. I don't think that you see that kind of willingness to step in and sub at every school, and I think it speaks a lot to the culture and the commitment that we have. So, that's amazing and worth mentioning, I think, again. And then my only question is just at the next meeting, if we could get the vaccination percentages
Okay.
For student bodies at each of the schools.
We've started collecting
Awesome.
Vaccination cards, so yes, we'll put that together.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
I have a question, Kathy, for the North Shore Labs. Any feedback at all about, I guess, results and turnaround or?
The, for the North Shore?
Yes.
The turnaround has been, most recently, just under 48 hours. So, like the 135 that we had on Wednesday, by Friday morning, we had all the results in. So, their turnaround is, was 24 hours, and now, because obviously, number of tests everywhere are increasing, so usually, less than 48 hours, we'll get the results from them.
And staff, they're happy with them?
I don't, Shannon, I don't know, have we had any positive tests?
Not that we've been made.
I don't think any of the people, which kind of makes sense, I think, because I think it's, you know, individuals who are really, you know, cognizant of the virus and are taking those steps, that's one more layer of mitigation, and so, they want to see that. And just a reminder to our community, it's getting harder and harder to find tests, and so, here's an opportunity for your children to be tested for free weekly, and you don't have to try and find a place to get a test.
And then I have another question about just with sports in general, and with the boards that run, the conferences that run our sports, any information from them, how our students are, how we're dealing with, I guess, any postponement or anything like that?
We, you know, like most schools, little blips here and there. We had early on a little bit with wrestling. We had some wrestlers who tested positive. And then our, I think it was girls' basketball, we had a couple of positive tests. We had, over the break, we had a game or two canceled. It wasn't because we couldn't field the team, it was the other team. So, it's kind of similar to last year when sports started up in the spring. It's, you know, it depends on the other school and how your school is doing, but we haven't really had, in the fall, we had an outbreak connected to football. Winter sports, we haven't had yet a true outbreak attributed to one of our programs.
Just looking for feedback with that.
Has the county Health Department said anything about, like, home testing? And I know that it has been in the news quite a bit lately, and I think the president announced something about getting free home tests, and I know that those home tests are rapid tests, but is the Health Department kind of on top of that piece of it with the additional opportunities to test that that will probably come in here?
We haven't had any communication on that end. I think next Monday is our next meeting with the Health Department, so we'll probably get an update then.
Okay.
No other questions? We'll move on.
No.
All right, we'll move to the presentation of monthly financial statements.
All right, tonight, we have the November financial statements. So, during the month of November, the district received $322,000 from the state. There are $118,000 of fiscal year '21 payments and $180,000 of fiscal year '22 payments vouchered but not released at this time. We did receive one installment of the 2021 tax levy in the amount of $231,000. So, total property taxes collected to date are 25.2 million, and that's a 99.29% collection rate, which is slightly higher than the prior two years. We do have one more tax collection that we should see, and that will, should bring us close to that 99.5 to 99.7% collection rate. Revenues in the Ed and TORT fund are slightly higher than the prior year averages, and again, this is a result of the variability of property tax receipts over the past few years and the percentage received during each fiscal year. And all of the payments that were vouched, were vouched for the Ed Fund as well as the receipts. In the O&amp;M Fund, revenues are comparable to the prior year averages. And in the Transportation Fund, revenues are above the prior year averages. And again, this is because of the timing of state payments and property taxes as well. We, there are no fiscal year '22 payments vouchered at this time, so the state's behind by one of their payments right now. Expenditures in the Ed and TORT funds are comparable to the prior year average, and in the O&amp;M Fund, again, variability from year to year. We are 31.65% spent to date versus 27.31 last year. And in the Transportation Fund, expenditures are above the prior year average. Obviously, our spending comparisons are extremely skewed because of remote learning last year and not providing transportation for a good part of the year. So, those trends are difficult to compare from year to year. Fund balance, overall, $22.6 million in all funds, and you, as, you know, we continue to go through the rest of this year, you'll start to see that fund balance number declining because we've received the majority of our property tax, and that is the majority of our revenue. And then investments for the month of November, we have $21.8 million invested at this point in time. And interest earnings, again, interest rates are, you know, near zero, so our interest rates are significantly lower than last year, and they are below projections as well for this year. And then the lunch report is attached as well as the Student Activity Funds. And I guess the lunch report, for the first time in forever, we actually have revenue over expenditures, and a lot of that is because of the higher reimbursement rates. We also are a little bit short-staffed, so salaries are a little bit lower as well. So, does anybody have questions? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Kim.
And we'll continue to budget staffing timeline.
So, even though we just started the new year, we're already starting to plan for the next school year, the '22, '23 school year. And so, attached for the board is the budget staffing timeline that the district will be working through. And so, it starts with January 27th, with the district admin team reviewing the budget development process and starting to take a look at those things. Some of these states are tentative, obviously, with just receiving the audit report this evening, Kim's financial projections, you know, normally, we are looking at those in February, and so, hopefully, we'll still be able to do that, but not going to be at the beginning of February. And so, there's involvement from the principals and the administrative team around March 9th, and again, that's a tentative date, would be a finance committee meeting for Kim to kind of review with the finance committee, kind of what the projections are, the long-range projections are for the district, and then also some of the early projections for revenue expenditures. And then the other important date for the board is that we also are looking at staffing timelines as well. And so, March 15th would be when the admin team would be making a recommendation to the board as far as staffing. So, if we're retaining staff, if we're ripping staff, if we think we need to reduce staffing, those recommendations would come to the board at March 15th. Contractually, we're kind of tied to making those decisions by a certain time in order to notify the staff appropriately, and so, that March 15th is typically when that would meet that timeline. And then, as you can see then, there's other steps in there as Kim will be building the budget, and then it was typically, as presented, a tentative budget in June, and then the public hearing for adoption would take place in September, and then it would have to be filed by the end of October. And so, that kind of gives you an idea of our process.
Are there any questions?
Comments?
No. Okay, we're going to move along to action items. The approval of our roof replacement contract for Westmont High School. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the roof replacement bid for Westmont High School with Preservation Services in the amount of $592,960, as presented.
$52,000.
I'm sorry, $592,960, as presented.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Ms. Steckedy?
Yes.
Ms. Coyle?
Yes.
Ms. Arabia?
Yes.
Ms. Conover?
Yes.
Ms. Hoover?
Yes.
Mr. Marin?
Yes.
Ms. Redonia?
Yes.
And move along to the superintendent's report.
So, just one real item in my superintendent's report. At this time of year, typically, I review our closing protocol, school closing protocols with, for our community, because if we're going to start having the inclement weather and possibly making those decisions, it's usually after the first of the year. But also, the board did agree to adopt e-learning, not for all five days, but at least approve the process. And so, the first step in that process is that our January 25th board meeting, we'll have a hearing for the community, we'll advertise that in the paper that we are having the hearing, and then the board will be passing a resolution at the January 25th meeting so that we can do that. But regardless if it's an e-learning day, or if it's a traditional emergency day, we do try to make that decision as early as possible, and so, if that decision can be made the night before, we do. Otherwise, by 5:15 in the morning of, we know that's late for some of our families, but sometimes you, we may have to wait till then, and that's regardless if it's a snow, the reason is snow, or if it's cold. And part of that process, we are communicating with other school districts to see what their thinking is, Building and Grounds Department to make sure that we can keep our buildings open, Westway to make sure that they can provide transportation. And we know that, you know, when you make that decision, some people are very happy about that decision, and some people are very frustrated, but we always think about what is in the best interest of our students and staff in making that decision.
So, I just have a request. Can we kind of get this reposted on the website?
Sure.
You know, so that the community that's going to the website, or maybe doesn't watch our board meetings, as riveting as they are,
Right.
Just has kind of a reiteration of kind of our policies around it.
Sure.
And then, I know you mentioned about posting in the, in the paper about the public hearing, something to think about? Does it make sense for us to also post on our Facebook page and our website about it?
Yep.
I know that the, I know that the paper part is the legally required part of it, but just so that we can maximize any, you know, communication, every communication area that we have, just, you know, that piece of it?
Yes, we will do that.
Thank you.
But you're right, the legal requirement's paper, so we always want to make sure. We mentioned paper, but yes, we will use social media and our website to promote it as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think we could, we could, as a district, be more cognizant of, yes, we've got the legal requirement piece of it,
Sure.
But how can we step, you know, in front of that a little bit more?
Sure. And that's my report.
Board reports? I just want to mention a reminder that I'm sitting here today in light of our, like, previous board's effort to cross-train or kind of develop officer roles, so, and that this is open to all board members and to our community. You might see another person, but it's also just to make sure the experience is, goes across our board. And thank you for your patience as I do this.
You did a great job.
You're great.
We're, return to public comment. Is there any public comment? Okay, we'll move along to future meetings and events. We have Westmont Junior High School PTO meeting is January 12th at 7:00 p.m. We have the School Board PR Committee meeting, January 13th at 6:00 p.m. at Westmont Junior High School. There's no school on January 17th honoring Martin Luther King Day. The Elementary Music Monae Night is January 21st at 6:00 p.m. at Westmont High School Commons. And then our next CUSD 201 board meeting has changed a little bit. It's January 25th, but it's at Westmont Village Hall. Any other dates or events?
What did you say had changed?
It, we think we had it listed as the high school.
Right, originally, the 25th board meeting, sometimes we have done student recognition, so then that meeting would start at 6:30 at the high school, but because of the increased numbers of positivity, we thought it was best not to bring large groups into the auditorium, and so, we're going with a traditional meeting, six o'clock start here at the Village Hall.
Got it, thank you.
And I believe we don't have any more business for closed session?
Nope.
How the chair entertain a motion to, I'm sorry, to, to?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any polls? All right, leading the jury.
All right. Great job.
I think that's a new record.
I tell you what.